Everybody please stand for the flag suit. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting Tuesday, March 5, 2015. The time is now 7:47. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for January 15, 2019, and February 5 of 2019. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Communications?
Thank you, Mayor. The Nutley-Belville-Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Committee has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, March 31, 2019, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at 44 Park Ave. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The Rubber Ducky Organization and Crank Systems have submitted an event application to hold a charitable walk starting at the end of 55 Washington Avenue on Sunday, April 7, 2019, from 9 a.m. to 12 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The Nutley Rotary Club has submitted an event application to hold their second annual car and motorcycle show on Franklin Avenue between Chestnut Street and Center Street on Wednesday, September 4, 2019, from 3:30 p.m. to 9 p.m. Need a motion?
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The Nutley High School Hockey Booster Club has submitted an event application to hold a Father's Day Street Fair on Franklin Avenue between Chestnut Street and Center Street on Sunday, June 16, 2019, from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The Friends of the Phoenix Center have submitted a social affair permit application for their casino night event to be held Friday, May 3, 2019, at 16 Monseigneur Owens Place from 6 p.m. to 11 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Bills?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for March 5, 2019. Public Affairs, $1,8,732.94. Revenue and Finance, $567,371.74. Public Safety, $89,474.54. Public Works, $109,631.48. Parks and Public Property, $611,781.24. Water Utility, $148,321.53. Total Payroll, $859,298.60. For a grand total of $4,494,612.7.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items or the budget workshop. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interest of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I'd like to get a copy of those papers tonight. Are they public yet?
What papers?
You, Ms. Costa was handing out papers.
No, they're draft, they're draft working copies for the workshop. I'm sorry, they're not available.
When will they be publicly available?
When we introduce the budget on March 19.
So it's like there's no information whatsoever between now and then that the public can review?
No, just again, it was a workshop session to discuss what the Commissioners were, where we're at. The public can listen to that, but those papers are in draft and they're working copies and they're subject to a lot of change, so they're not available.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. Under Revenue and Finance, I see a fee for $964 for Rutgers. Could you tell me what specifically that is for?
I can. That is for my, in my treasury area, for one of my clerks to attend a course regarding the construction of the budgets. I don't remember the specific name of the course, but it's specifically targeted to her job function.
Okay, thank you. And then there are, I see, over $10,000 for Public Safety with Ocean Computer Group?
I could check that out for you. I'm thinking that's probably a maintenance agreement with us.
Okay, because it's under two different line items, one 7654 and the other one is $3,343. I thought that sounded, this is a two-week bill list, I'm just wondering.
I could, I could get back to you tomorrow on that if you like.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Amy Salento, 17 Newman Avenue. Regarding the current draft budget, there was mention that the state aid reduction or the anticipated state aid reduction will be over $600,000, but there was talk of some of the Mecca settlement offsetting that. So I'm not sure, I think in a prior meeting about the Mecca settlement, there was some discussion about that potentially offsetting expenses for the townwide reassessment. So I'm not really sure like how much Mecca money goes towards what. It seems like it's sort of coming up a lot.
Yeah, Amy, that's, that's actually, actually outlined in the settlement agreement itself. But for tonight, we discussed a couple of things. One is by statute, we're only allowed to anticipate 85% of the previous year's state aid. So we received, and this is a transitional state aid, so we received 4.1 million of transitional aid for 2018. We're only allowed to anticipate 85% of that, which is roughly $3.6 million. So in total, that's a $615,000 reduction in revenue for us until we're able to meet with the state and determine what the number will be for 2019. Offsetting that revenue decrease is what we talked about, is that we do have an entry of a new revenue item, which is actually two items. One is $100,000, which is specific to the Mecca settlement, was a reimbursement to the town for its costs incurred. So we, since we did incur those costs, that revenue came into the budget to offset those costs. Some of those costs were incurred in 18, some of them are actually part of the 2019 budget. And there is a $25,000 adjustment for the work Roche for legal fees for our town attorney, reimbursing us for some of the cost for the time that he has spent in addition to his regular duties there. So that, in summary, those three points discuss the overall change in revenue year over year and addresses your question regarding the budget as well as the settlement agreement.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question. I think possibly part of the closed session was about Chickalini Building redevelopment, and you may not be able to answer this, but if I recall, there are two buildings the town has purchased in the past few years, the Davis Building and the Chickalini Building. Both of them don't have a plan attached to them as of yet. I asked about this last meeting about Chickalini. It sounds like something will be forthcoming. Is there a timeline as to when there will be a plan for either or both buildings, Chickalini and Davis?
The Chickalini Building will probably be something on the agenda at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And the Davis Building, which there was some talk previously of it being transferred to the school district. I mean, it's still, still the same taxpayer money, so is there any thought, plan, information about the Davis Building?
Not this time, Ms. Salento.
Okay, so my last thing I just want to say is zero-based budgeting. It was mentioned last year that the budget would be zero-based budget. I still don't hear that anybody's doing zero-based budgeting, and with the anticipated shortfalls and possible, right now, proposed 5.1% increase just in the town's tax budget, taxes. I don't know, it seems like possibly going back to scratch is a way to really get down to the very, very bottom line possibilities of expenditures, so just wanted to suggest that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioners?
I have one, Mayor. Last evening, the Essex County chapter of the National Football Foundation and the College Hall of Fame awarded Frank DeMayo, the, I guess you were the man of the year, Frank, for your contribution to amateur football. And that's not only all of our levels here in Nutley with the Junior Raiders, but for all his work and collaboration with all of the other organizations throughout the county of Essex, all right? And I just wanted to publicly congratulate Frank. Again, I had the pleasure of being there and clapping with his family and his four tables of friends, and I just think it's important for everyone to know what kind of people we have working for us, so thank you.
What do you else have to announce?
Mayor, I'd just like to answer Mrs. Rossi's own question that she had for me about that money on the bill list. That was for computers and new work stations in the Detective Bureau, just so you know. Thank you.
Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petracca, public hearings?
Ordinance number 3415, an ordinance to amend the salaries of certain officers and employees of the township of Nutley, County of Essex, State and New Jersey, be detained by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in County of Essex, New Jersey.
Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3415?
462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Petracca, on, this is a $10,000 raise for Clerk One, I believe, if I'm reading this correctly.
This is for what we're doing, this is actually only going to be temporary. What I did was I moved the dispatcher up to the court and we didn't have a clerk's position there. We have a retirement coming up, of our deputy clerk, actually, and with that being said, we're just doing this to train. Meanwhile, I have not filled that dispatcher spot while I'm doing this as well.
Fill in the dispatcher spot, that's not on the ordinance for this evening. It's going from, if I understand, it's a Clerk One position. Now according to DCA, you can assign, each town can assign whatever value that is, how much they want to pay for. Isn't there a Clerk Two, so that we wouldn't have to raise a Clerk One salary?
I don't think, I think the reason why we're doing this is because the way our table of organization is in, and we didn't have the civil service title in that, in the court to put her there, and that's where the issue came up. So again, I mean, the way it's been explained to me, is this a bookkeeping matter because we didn't have that slot in order to do this pre-training until that person retires?
I guess your explanation is-
And, and, and just, so you know, actually that person's taken a pay cut of what they were making as a dispatcher to move into that court position.
So the dispatch position?
Why I'm doing this, this training, you know, very simply put, we have somebody leaving in the court, okay? So before that person leaves, we're trying to train someone. It happened to be the person that I put there was a dispatcher, because as we're looking at these budgets and trying to save money, that position I might not even fill, again, that dispatch position. So it's actually, there's no more money coming out of my budget while I'm doing this, is what I'm saying. And it was this a bookkeeping matter that I didn't have the civil service title in the court in order to put that person there.
But that means, how many, are there any Clerk Ones? Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
I, I-
Right now, are there any?
There wasn't any vacancy for a Clerk One position to put this person in that spot.
So you're basically creating a position in the court as a Clerk One?
I'm creating a position temporarily, only because of the training. In other words, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have had the, the court is like a separate entity, it's not like, it is a separate entity.
I get it, but-
And through civil service. So when we, when I went to move this person, I thought because that person was in Public Safety, was simply going from dispatcher to the court. We didn't have a position, civil service, to make that transition work, I mean, very well.
So based on your explanation, I'm trying to understand, any other clerks over there, are they Clerk Ones as well by title?
I, I believe we have Clerk One and Clerk Two positions, but I, and throughout Public Safety and the Township, but we didn't have it in the court where this person was going.
I, I guess the point I'm trying to raise is that you can bring somebody in as a title as Clerk One.
Right.
At $35,000.
Right.
Rather than raising a $10,000 as a Clerk One, because everybody else by title goes up as well because of this ordinance, why don't you just continue?
No, everybody else is not going up because of this ordinance.
But you do by the, by ordinance, just by the definition, a Clerk One will now be titled $45,000.
No, that's the, that's just the range.
That's just the range.
That's just the range.
I, I understand it's a range, but the range is $45,000.
The range is $45,000, and I'll tell you, Rory, you do, for how many years I've been on the Board, I get that range, what you're saying. And I, I was always advocate to be very specific, but then we would be doing this every meeting as people grow their salaries.
But this, by definition, this now raises every Clerk One to $45,000, potentially.
That's not how I'm looking at that. I mean, I see, it's, this is for municipal court. It's a municipal court position.
Commissioner, just so I can help, this ordinance only adds the position. It does, the salary range, I believe, is already what's in the salary range for Clerk Ones, so what you're doing is adding a position to the municipal court that doesn't exist in civil service. So the salary is what's, I believe, already in place for Clerk Ones in that position. So we're not changing the salary structures no more, we're just adding a Clerk One position to the, to the municipal court.
I guess, is your current-
Rory, I understand your question. I understand your question. Is there more than one Clerk One in the municipal court?
I would think there is, but I think-
And so for all the municipal clerks, for all of the Clerk Ones in the municipal court?
They just got a pay raise.
Are they, no, are they, are they all within the range of $35,000 to $45,000?
I believe so.
So if, so if someone is, is a Clerk One and they're currently at $38,000, their pay isn't changing. This just sets a salary range, it says their salary could be between a minimum of 35 and a maximum of $45,000.
Exactly, how I understand.
But, yes, but it's not giving them all a raise, it's just simply adding that range. So if, if you, and the reason why I ask the question is if you have Clerk Ones that are already in the municipal clerk, excuse me, in the municipal court, right, and they're already there, right? I understand the, the question is that why would you need an ordinance line item, because my suspicion is that there isn't any other Clerk Ones, and that this is the first one. Is that correct? So this is, this, but I'm saying, this isn't, this is a position of Clerk One, the position of Clerk One, but it has two, but there's now, you're adding a person to it, right?
I think it's just, I think, I think it's just, Commissioner, I, I think it's just, very simply put, there wasn't a vacancy in the Clerk One to put her in a Clerk One position. So then, so then rather than put her in a Clerk Two position, which was more mine, it was just a vacancy that we had to make.
Al, so what I'm saying is, the title of Clerk One already exists in civil service in the municipal court.
Right.
The salary range is $35,000 to $45,000 for all the Clerk Ones in that, in that position, and the one that's currently a Clerk One based upon what you said is already within this range. All this is saying is that I've got two people.
And that person's taking a pay cut to do that.
You're adding a headcount.
We're adding a headcount. Tempor, just temporarily until that person retires. So we're going to replace somebody with a smaller salary.
So it's, so if, to be clear, then this would be Clerk One, parenthetically, the number two, to say there's two positions here.
You nailed it, exactly.
Should've wrote it that way.
Well, you know what, I don't know how, I'll check that tomorrow, but I don't know how specific that is as far as it's, I'm assuming it didn't say clerks, and that's why we had to go to this. So it doesn't say one clerk or two clerks or five clerks, so that's a little bit confusing.
Effectively, you have one Clerk One and you're going to add to two. Effectively, that's all you're going to do.
Temporarily. That's the key word.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard in ordinance number 3415? Seeing none? I move to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Good news I have tonight, our esteemed counsel just told me I don't have to read the ordinance in its entirety tonight, so-
That is good news.
That's good news. I am going to introduce it by its title. Ordinance number 3416. This specific ordinance is for a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of tax related to building, a building which is known as 100 Metro on the Hoffen LaRoche property. Some might recognize, recognize this building as originally as Building One. The importance of this ordinance is very significant to the township. One, it's been publicly released that Ralph Lauren is going to occupy this, this building. It was critical to securing that leasehold and that, having that tenant, that we have a financing agreement in place. So by, one, by moving forward on this, it's securing the greater ability to have that building fully occupied by a stellar tenant. And then that much of that support goes to Prism for the hard work that they've done in identifying a wonderful tenant to occupy that, that building. What's also important about this financing agreement is why should we do this as a town, right? Pilot agreements, when you read about them, sort of will tell you that you collect your municipal tax, you don't collect the school tax, and you only collect 5% of the county tax, and the rest of that isn't paid. So that way, if you under, if you read it just at that level, then the default is that the remaining taxpayers have to pick up that differential cost. In this particular financing agreement, and it's the same with the next ordinance, so we won't go through this twice, is the negotiating posture of the town, which was acceptable to Prism, was that we would secure full local taxation based upon the taxes that we received in 2018. And local taxation is, the full amount is the school, full municipal and school tax. So we weren't excluding that. We also were able to negotiate that part of the county savings, a part of the 95% savings in the county, the township would be able to retain that as well. In addition, the financing agreement has an escalator in it, that, it's a minimum of 2% as well as an administrative fee. So collectively, we've been able to work with Prism, who is very passionate about their, their future for the property, and making sure that they're attracting premium tenants to, to the site. You may have also heard that through the planning board, that the, in order to ensure that we have that tenant, that there's also a structured parking garage that will be built next to Building One and Building 200 to provide parking for these, these tenants that are going to be there. So basically, in summary, it basically says that Nutley participates a full local taxation with an increasing, an increase, an annual increase of 2% a year. And that's on both buildings, that's, the concept is on both buildings. We're very grateful for that because what's the benefit of the town? A vacant property is now becoming redeveloped, we're adding some stellar tenants to the property, and all of this, you know, is critical to understand, is that it wasn't my position to negotiate this, it was the universal position of the Board of Commissioners that this was our negotiating posture. We have to secure the full benefit for the residents of the town and make sure that this site remains very competitive and very, very attractive. So with the unanimous commitment of the Board, and you guys can, you know, chime in, we were able to move forward because in negotiating this, that was the posture of the entire Board of Commissioners, and there was no leeway on that. It was, it was a firm, firm position. So at the end, you know, we're basically securing tax revenue for the future for the town over the life of the 30-year pilot. We, those revenues actually grow, so it's not static, and we now have the ability to have a wonderful building occupied by Ralph Lauren, which then creates the opportunity for jobs, real jobs, for the residents of the township and the opportunity for that. So that's the public hearing, that's my, my comments. I'm going to ask Dean Donatelli if you want to add, but before I do that, Commissioners, would you like to add anything to, to what I just commented on or your?
Let's have Dean add his, his comments, and then we'll, then we'll comment after that.
Dean?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, for the record. Dean Donatelli, I'm Special Redevelopment Counsel for the Township. I'm going to really reiterate some of the highlights that Commissioner Evans had mentioned. You mentioned Prism, they're very tough negotiators, the commission, Commissioners took a very hard stance, got the best deal possible for the, for the, for the township. Couple of unique pieces of this, these financial agreements for both buildings, 100 and 200, is the, the school share. Typically, you'll see in these financial, financial agreements, as, as the Commissioner mentioned, Commissioner Evans mentioned, they don't typically encompass the, the school share of what the town would have otherwise received, and, and that was mutually negotiated and, and is incorporated into these agreements. The second piece of it, which also was mentioned, is there is a minimum payment schedule for each agreement, which increases, the minimum payment that the township will receive increases 2% each year, which again is a relatively unique piece of a financial agreement structure. And, and really you can kind of summarize it, and the town's financial consultant could tell you, what it allows is the town to have upside participation by way of the annual percentage of, percentage of annual gross revenue, as well as downside protection with the minimum annual service charge payments. That's really all. Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Dean, Commissioners?
Not a question, just a comment. I just want to, I just want to compliment our professionals, all right, and Prism's professionals, all right, for hammering out such an equitable deal, all right? This is somewhat unique, having been involved with some other pilots and some other places, I think this- I think this is one of the fairest ones that I've ever seen, and I, I'd just like to commend everyone for all the hard work that went into this, and Prism is a top-notch developer. I, I think everyone's seeing the, the fruits of their labors, and every day, it just gets better and better. And yes, Dean, they are tough negotiators, but that's why they're successful. So we, we welcome you to our community, we expect to continue on, and perhaps do more agreements like this, so, thank you all.
Misses?
I just, I just like to add that, when we first met, first of all, I'd like to thank Dean, too. I know, Dean, you do a lot of the work, and I know John gets a lot of the credit for it, but...
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you and John, and everybody else, yeah, let's hear it for, for Dean, that's right. He is. Gene, there'll be no outbursts tonight here either, okay? But, anyway, it's been a privilege, here we go, it's been a privilege for me to work with, first of all, everybody on our board, and I keep saying this, and I'll say it at every meeting, you know, in two thousand thirteen, or two thousand twelve, I became the mayor, two thousand thirteen, was it, that they announced Roach was leaving? And when we first start working with all the professionals, they all said, you're twenty to thirty years out from, from, you know, having something, you know, fill up that site, because office space was way down in northern New Jersey at the time, and the reason why I keep bringing that up is because the leaps and bounds we've made together, gentlemen, I think is astonishing for the town, and there's still some people in town that I think were moving a little too slow, and I get that, because we're all anxious to get this done, and get ratables, and get jobs for our people, but I have to say, it's been really, again, an honor and a privilege to work with Prism, Tom Lyons from Roach at the time, all his staff, and our board, and all our professionals, and, and I have to say, we're way ahead of schedule, as far as what's been going on on that site, compared to where we were in two thousand thirteen, so, thanks for your efforts, too, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dean, I'd like to thank you, and John, and Tom Banker, and Commissioner Evans, who led the Board of Commissioners on your team, and we're happy to welcome Prism here, and we got some signings to do later on, not only with the two pilot agreements, but also with the redevelopment agreement, and the withdrawal of the tax appeals. So, all in all, we're, we're doing well, and I'd like to thank you and John for your leadership.
Thank you all.
Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number three, four, one, six?
Rory, is this off? Can you hear me? More, more, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, just, just two questions. It's thirty years on the, on the pilot program?
Yes.
And Dean just referred, there's a minimum payment. What is that minimum payment?
It basically says that, that the minimum tax that we would get was, was based upon the local taxes that we paid, plus this twenty, twenty-five percent of the county savings, as, two thousand eighteen is the base year, and that it escalates two percent a year for the next thirty years, and that's the minimum that we would collect. It can escalate, if it grows greater than that, we win, but that's the minimum that we'll collect.
Is there a number on the minimum?
Yeah, yeah, there is a schedule for that. I, I...
The schedule's been on file with the clerks for the last two weeks. Once it's signed tonight, you'll be able to get Oprah a copy of it.
Okay.
Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number three, four, one, six? Mr. Diaz.
Eugene Diaz, three forty Kingsland Street, Nutley, New Jersey.
Very nice, very nice.
So, you know, I think, behalf of my partner and I, you know, Prism has, we believe, we've built our reputation on win-win partnerships with municipalities, that, that we've been fortunate enough to develop it. This was a, we took this on, it's a very daunting task, hundred and twenty acres, one-point-two million square feet of vacant space, very complex environmental situation, very complex utility and infrastructure situation, and it's been a joy, quite frankly, for my partner and I to have worked with such a professional township, both from the commissioner level down to your professionals. I need to take a minute to thank our professionals, since they're here tonight, but still, it's coming, who provided such great leadership with us in negotiating these agreements. What Prism gets out of this at the end of the day, the town is getting pretty much what you're getting today, plus growth going forward. People might question, well, what's in it for Prism? The most important thing for us is certainty, and the most important thing for the tenants that are coming into this campus and occupying these buildings, is certainty of understanding what their expenses are, and what their costs are going to be going forward. And I think what this, what this pilot agreement provides is thirty years of certainty of understanding what those numbers are going to be. And that's really a critical, important step for us, to be able to continue to grab and, and attract great blue-chip companies to Nutley and to the On Three campus. So, yes, it, it was a, we, we got through some pretty tough details with you guys, and, and ladies, and, and your professionals, and, but at the end of the day, I think cool heads prevailed, everybody recognized the importance of providing stability, certainty, and open-arm expression to the business community that Nutley's open for business, and that you're here to have the kind of substantive discussions that are necessary in today's economic environment, to tell blue-chip companies and blue-chip tenants, hey, if you need to talk, if you need to understand, if you need to see what we're about, or where we are, what we can offer you, Nutley planted your flag out there today, and told the world, hey, come see us, because we're open for business, and we can negotiate complex transactions, and entertain a, a, a fundamental financial agreement that makes sense to everybody. So, Commissioners, we thank you, we're excited about this, this is, again, another, yet another milestone in the redevelopment of On Three, and we look forward to many more to come. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Mr. Cohen?
I'm not gonna bore you with repeating what my partner had to say, but the vision that we had for this campus, when we decided to move forward on it, is happening, and it's happening faster than we thought it would be happening. And that's working in cooperation with all of the people in this room that I'm looking at right now, and we appreciate it, and we look to just make this bigger and better as we move forward. And I wanna thank you for all your cooperation, and all of the hard work that all of us went through to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number three, four, one, six? Before we close the public hearing, I wanna say that, just to dovetail on Mr. Diaz, this is a win-win-win. Win for the taxpayers, win for the municipality, win for the school district, and also a win for the developer, in offering them predictability to attract a quality tenant like they have in Ralph Lauren. So I thank you very much for that.
Move the close, public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
You know, before I vote aye, I'd just like to bring one other thing to the table, that, you know, with Modern Meadow there, all those companies that are already there, Gene, and Ed, the businesses, including mine, have definitely felt that uptick. So, another positive for Nutley is that, you know, we could already see through the construction, the workers coming throughout our town and spending their dollars there, so, I really think it's been fantastic, what's going on there, and I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the... Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner, three, four, one, seven?
Yes. So, just in case you forgot everything I said on the first ordinance, let me repeat it, so... Three, four, one, seven is, is linked to the previous ordinance, in that, and only difference, difference in it is, the fact that it's a different building. It's Building Two Hundred, previously known as Building Seventy-Six, and this is the tall glass building that everyone sees from the highway, when they look, look, and they think about this campus. So, I'm not gonna repeat anything that it said, because everything carries over to this. The only thing that I would add is that this building is currently vacant, we're hoping to hear soon, that we will have a stellar tenant in that building, which will further create greater job opportunities for, for the people of Nutley. So, with that, we can open the public hearing.
Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number three, four, one, seven? Sing, now.
Move the close?
Move the close? Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Resolution number seventy nineteen, observing the month of March as National Women's History Month, twenty nineteen, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Sure. Whereas Township of Nutley receives sealed bids for surplus equipment no longer in use by the Township on February fifth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas Jersey One Auto Sales, four ninety-five, four ninety-seven, Tunnel Lee Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, and Marsax Inc., two forty-seven Central Avenue, with touchin', were the highest bidders for the equipment as listed on this resolution, which includes a two-thousand Bluebird bus, with the Jersey One price for it was six hundred and sixty dollars, and a nineteen ninety-five Ford F-four-fifty dump truck, in the amount of two thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars, also by Jersey One, and one nineteen ninety-one GMC Topkick dump truck to Marsax Inc., in the amount of five hundred and sixty dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that the surplus items to be sold to the highest bidder, Jersey One Auto Sales and Marsax Inc. I move the resolution.
Move it, I have a second, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property, Township of Nutley has a need to replace the fencing at the American Little League Baseball Field, and whereas three quotes were received, and the lowest quote was received from Quality Fence of Peak Skill Inc., twelve-twenty-three Lincoln Terrace, Peak Skill, New York, with the price of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is below the Township bid threshold, and whereas funds are available from account G there zero four one fifty-four four oh three, ordinance thirty-three seventy-two C, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that Quality Fence of Peak Skill, New York, be awarded a contract to replace the fencing at American Little League Baseball Field. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
I vote aye, and I'm glad we're doing that.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number sixty-five dash nineteen authorizes the Treasurer to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for Block Thirteen Hundred, one, C, two, zero, eight, four, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My next ordinance, my next resolution is sixty-nine nineteen. This resolution authorizes the execution of a property tax appeal settlement agreement between the Township and PB Nutcliffe. There has been outstanding tax appeals associated with the, the Roche property, covering the years sixteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen. What this resolution does, and ultimately, with the signing of the settlement agreement, we now remove that risk to the township, and in effect, it solidifies our tax base, which is important for us, because we need to continue to move forward with the great progress that we're making, to continue to, to move forward on a solid base, and build additional revenues that contribute to the value of the, the township and the job opportunities. We can't do that with things like this outstanding. So, as part of the negotiation, I wanna thank both Gene and Ed for agreeing to recognize how important this was for the town, and really helps us now stay focused on the future development of the property. So, with that, this resolution basically authorizes a settlement agreement between the Board of Commissioners and PB Nutcliffe concerning the properties described herein, and therefore, prepared, and herefore to for prepared, or to be prepared, in a form and with conditions and revisions, as deemed advisable by the Township Attorney, is hereby authorized and approved, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Before I vote, there's just one comment I'd like to make, like the, the pilot agreements that we previously executed, which gave Prism financial certainty, this settlement also gives the Township financial certainty.
Absolutely.
So, I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that Kevin Husky, an employee of the Department of Public Safety, has be granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective February eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, through April first, two thousand nineteen. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Nutley Double Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee, license number twelve nineteen, number thirteen nineteen, and number fourteen nineteen, twelve and thirteen to be held on Sunday, March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, number fourteen to be held on Sunday, October thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Washington School PTO, license number fifteen nineteen, sixteen nineteen, and, and sixteen nineteen...
I'm sorry, that should be seventeen nineteen.
Seventeen nineteen, to be held Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk, and the police department now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has the need to retain the services of an attorney who specializes in municipal land use, law, and policy, to provide legal advice and services in connection with the Township land use policies and litigation, whereas Angelo Cefeli of the law firm of Pirros in and Cefeli, Paris and Geno Tempo, three sixty, Passaic Avenue, has submitted proposals in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Angelo Cefeli. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley, and a notice in accordance with the Local Public Contracts Law in New Jersey, in the form attached heretofore, shall be published in Nutley, so move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the mandatory source separation recycling act, Public Law nineteen eighty-seven, chapter one oh two, has established a recycling fund from which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation and recycling programs. Whereas it is the intent and sphere of the mandatory source separation recycling act to use the tonnage grants to develop new municipal recycling programs, to continue to expand existing programs. Whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that application is properly completed and timely filed, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State, and New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of the two thousand eighteen municipal recycling Whereas the mandatory source separation recycling act, public law nineteen eighty-seven, chapter one oh two, has established a recycling fund from which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation and recycling programs. Whereas it is the intent and sphere of the mandatory source separation recycling act to use the tonnage grants to develop new municipal recycling programs, to continue to expand existing programs. Whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that application is properly completed and timely filed. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioner Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of the two thousand eighteen municipal recycling tonnage grant application to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, that designates Salvatore Ferraro Recycling Quarter Coordinator, Township of Nutley, to ensure the application is properly filled. And move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. This is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is resolution seventy-two nineteen. Whereas Norfolk Southern Corp. petitioned the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the closure of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Whereas Township of Nutley strongly objects to the arbitrary and capricious selection of Norfolk Southern to the closure of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing in Nutley. Whereas Highfield Lane is an important and viable roadway within the Township of Nutley, serves its citizens as a major connection point between Washington Avenue, State Route Seven, and Passaic Avenue. Whereas there is no justifiable reason for the closing of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing, and where there are no current, where currently no train movements on Norfolk Southern's Newark Industrial Track crossing Highfield Lane, and there have not been any train movements for several years. Whereas the closure of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing will divert traffic to adjacent intersection, intersections, thus increasing the amount of vehicular and pedestrian traffic at those intersections. Whereas the closing of Highfield Lane will negatively impact emergency response time for the Township of Nutley Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, EMTs, and paramedics to respond to emergency and life-threatening situations in the area of Highfield Lane east of the existing crossing. Whereas the county of Passaic will be constructing a new bridge at nearby Kingsland Street in Clifton, wherein Kingsland Street will be closed for twelve to eighteen months, thus further impact traffic patterns in the area of Highfield Lane. And whereas in a letter dated January eighth, two thousand nineteen, Prison Capital Partners objected to the arbitrary, arbitrary closing of Norfolk Southern Corp. of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing in Nutley. And whereas in letters dated November eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, to Norfolk Southern and New Jersey T.O.T., Township of Nutley objected to the closing of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing in Nutley, and withdrew their support for the conversion of private rail crossings at the former Hoffa Muro site in Clifton into permanent public crossings. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioner Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the township is vehemently opposed to the arbitrary and capricious closure of Norfolk Southern Corp. to Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing in Nutley, New Jersey. Be further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley strongly petitions New Jersey Department of Transportation to render a decision to not allow for the closure of Highfield Lane at grade rail crossing in Nutley, New Jersey, as it would cause severe and permanent hardships to its residents and taxpayers, and negatively impact their health and safety due to the delayed emergency response time. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Commissioner Petrako, January this year, I approached, and I had asked about overnight parking. And you're starting, you're starting to see a number of cars parked on the street. And I remember, if I remember my dialogue correctly, you said that if it came up with a plan, you might be considering it. Just in right up here in Chestnut, usually there's forty cars on the street, and normally they're not ticketed. And my remarks are not to have them ticketed. But I said, the residents of an existing apartment house where there's not enough to park it, they have to park on the street, there's no other place available. Is it possible to have a sticker or some type of placard, for better word, to say that the car would be registered, I live here, and I would be parked on the street in a confined area, which would allow the residents of the apartments to actually park on the street? So ironically, today I had a conversation with the chief of police just about this overnight parking. And he walked in my store, and he said that the stress it's putting on our police department as far as fielding those calls every day, you know, to grant permission, is overwhelming. They get from seventy-five to a hundred calls in, in the afternoon about people that want to park on their street. So with that being said, it is definitely putting a burden on our police department. I also asked him how many tickets, overnight parking tickets, we write a month. I believe he said six to seven hundred overnight parking tickets a month that we are writing. Can you get them all? Obviously not, and I know that's not what you're here for. But it's funny that you should bring that up tonight, Rory, and I did want to discuss this with the Board of Commissioners, and we might as well have a little discussion now about it. The chief of police was telling me in Montclair, that what they're doing right there now is what the parking kiosks, Mr. Mayor, are you aware what they do with overnight parking there? In Montclair, they're charging a fee, and the people are, if you need to park on the street for whatever reason, just like you would go to the kiosk to pay for your, your parking, you know, one of our municipal lots, they're doing it in Montclair right now. So I think, I don't know if the Board of Commissioners agree with that, if they don't, but I think that our town is definitely changing, the needs are, and I think that we do need to come up with a plan, and maybe what we should do, and I will do this maybe in the quarter over here, is maybe have some public meetings, like town meetings, to get the residents out, get the input of the Board of Commissioners. Because I have to tell you, fielding seventy-five to a hundred calls between four, you know, o'clock and pretty much eight o'clock, you know, when, God forbid, you need an ambulance dispatched or something else, it's really taken away from, and it seems like more than ever, there really is a need. I'll tell you, I'm from Nutley my whole life, I think that the overnight parking ordinance is what keeps Nutley a little different than our surrounding communities. I know it helps the mayor with the snow removal and all that stuff, but I don't think it's nineteen fifty here anymore, and as much as I don't want to see that ordinance removed or changed in any way, I think the public is, the outcry that we're getting is that we at least should go through some type of exercise to see if it's not doing, is charged for overnight parking where you could get it out of the kiosk, if it's doing something else, but I think that we do need to get on that. I'm not sure, when you say kiosk, did you say park, in a parking lot? No, no, what they're doing in Montclair, according to the chief's conversation with me today, is that he said that, and he was in a meeting today about this ironically, that in Montclair, what you could do is go to one of the municipal lots where you would pay for your parking instead of paying for your parking in a municipal lot. It has a function that you could hit overnight parking. And there's a, I think in Montclair, they're charging five dollars a transaction for that. And then he gives that person to hang that decal up in their window. If a police officer goes through there at night, they see the decal on the window, they check, you know, the date, and then I think it's, you know, they would be good to go. If that's something that we want to look into, you know, if there's something else, but I hear your, your comments, and they're received loud and clear, because even for us in the police department, it is putting a great deal of stress on the police department right now. I could understand a fee. I don't think, I don't think a resident of an apartment should have to run over every day to fetch a placard. Well, that's why, that's why I think we should do it, like in a public setting, Rory, because It should, it should That'll bring up, you know what, maybe you can get it for a week, you know, or maybe that would be a discussion that, you know, we could get out of the group, you know, like you said, you shouldn't have to run over there every day. Because most people, it, the planning board lots, I believe it's one point eight parking lots for a one-bedroom apartment, two people, two cars, that's difficult to do. Eventually, with all the apartments that are being built, you're going to eventually spill over, and it's going to increase the size of it eventually. I mean, eventually, they're saying that we're not going to have cars anymore. I mean, but, you know, that's a whole nother thing. I'm leaving. But no, I know. But I'm just saying that you bring up a great point, and I really, you know, more than ever, you know, the truth of the matter is, is that it is putting a very good amount of stress during our busiest tour on the police department. Okay, what's your need for overnight parking? Then when you deny a resident, because now there is a criteria to meet, you know, and we urge everyone, if you could find a neighbor in your neighborhood, you know, an elderly person that's not driving, maybe rent a space, I mean, we, we've gone through all those drills, and apparently, if we're writing six hundred tickets a month, you know what, we're still, we still have an issue here that needs to be resolved. I'd like to suggest that probably in April, after the business portion of a regular meeting, that the public could be able to speak, at least be able, not to be afraid, to be limited to No, I, I want people to come out and really voice their concerns, because I think communication is the most important thing, you know, if we, look, I've said this time and time again, we're an extension of the people. It's not without Petrako wants up here, it's what the majority of the people of Nutley want. That's what I represent, you know, and again, I'm from Nutley, I don't want to see that ordinance change, and I know, I mean, we've talked about this, and we all feel very strong. However, in the twelve years that I've been on this board, I have seen that issue really, really arise now. Parking overnight is an issue in Nutley.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
You should pick a date.
Anybody else wish to address
Mr. Moore, before you sit down? I, why? No, 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 listen, listen. You had a conversation with myself, with me in the back, and I'll tell you, there's nothing more than hearing a proud dad talk about his son who served in the U.S. military and recently retired. So I want to take this opportunity, thank you and your son for serving this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. His last duty station was the White House.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, twenty-eight Colonial Terrace. Listening to the budget workshop, I had a few questions. So Commissioner Petrako, it seems that there is an over million-dollar increase in salaries for public safety, and I think it's important to shed light on that and help the citizens understand why such an increase. My first question, though, is what criteria defines the role of a fire chief versus a deputy fire chief?
Sure. A fire chief is in charge, and a deputy is one notch under a fire chief. And it's different job responsibility. And Nutley, as you know, the volunteer chief is, the chief's position is on the volunteer side, and on the paid career side, we have the deputy chief that runs the day-to-day operations. So
So what does the fire chief do? He's not running day-to-day operations?
The fire chief, look, Nutley's a very unique town with this, you know, the fire chief, again, is a volunteer. So does he oversee it? Yes. Is, and the deputy chief is the one that is running the day-to-day operations, not the fire chief here, because of, because the fire chief is a volunteer.
Okay, but the criteria or the required skills and knowledge for fire chief, I understand, one would have to pass a fire chief exam, correct?
Well, Nutley, so Nutley is civil service. These are all civil service exams, the promotional exams that are, you know, through civil service, you know, that we have, they test, they do the testing, and then we get the results from them.
Right. So the civil service exam required of the fire chief would or should require more than that of the deputy fire chief?
Yes.
Okay, so, and because of that, the role of the fire chief, he does have greater responsibility in day-to-day operations over the deputy fire chief, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, because the, I know you say we have a volunteer fire chief.
We have a very unique situation in Nutley, I said.
It's very unique.
It is.
There's literally a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar difference in salary between a fire chief and a deputy fire chief, and that, and a fire chief is making the lesser amount.
Well
So that's just, it's just, I'm, but I'm just trying to learn, you know, and provide the citizens of Nutley clarity on why we're paying a deputy fire chief this type of salary when he has less responsibilities than the fire chief.
Well, you know what, I have to tell you, that's always good to clarify, and when you're clarifying, what you should do is check in other towns and see what these deputy chiefs are making there and fire chiefs. So Nutley is not paying a fire chief because it's on the volunteer side. And, you know, to have a deputy chief that should really, well, I shouldn't say should really be, but acts as a chief every day, because, you know, a volunteer is a volunteer, and our volunteer chief does an excellent job. However, you know, the deputy chief is running the day-to-day operations. Way back when, when I first got elected, there was a desecrated done with the Nutley Fire Department, saying that instead of, you know, lieutenants and chiefs, really, there should be battalion chiefs there as well, and, you know, through the desecu' it addressed the chief versus the deputy chief, you know, and the deputy chief being in a volunteer position.
Okay.
So really, kind of like how I want to answer that, Tammy, if you don't mind, is really, Nutley's really kind of, you know, what's the right word I want to use, is profiting a little bit, because most departments have chiefs. Most departments have multiple deputy chiefs, and they have battalion chiefs. So when you do your research, just know the difference in titles, because when people say to me, in Nutley, we have lieutenants, you know, when we did the desecu', there was some language back and forth of what their title should really be. So there's a difference between a battalion and a captain, according to when you go through the county and state averages.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you very much for that clarity. My next question would be, what is the ratio of patrolmen to leadership in the police department?
I don't know if it's four or five to one, I would have to get back to you on that. But the police department, I will tell you, we just became, as you know, one of the safest communities in the state, the top fifty to live in, and I'm going to tell you, you know what, it's not cheap, you know, and we put on supervision probably more than other agencies do around the state. But I have to tell you, I mean, in my opinion, in Nutley Police Department, first of all, we don't know what we're preventing, there's no way to measure what they prevent, and I have to tell you, I mean, I'll put our guys against anyone in our budget. Just like a little mute point, being you're bringing that up, our overtime budget in the police department is three hundred and fifty thousand every year. Usually, in other towns, they're in the millions just for overtime because of, you know, of trying to cover shifts, shifts, and all that kind of stuff. So the Nutley Police Department, again, I'm not arguing salaries and rank and that kind of things, but I have to tell you, I mean, to come in the top fifty, especially where we're located in the state, and what our, you know, surroundings and where we're by, I think it's money well spent.
Okay, great. I know in the back room, you said we were at seventy-one for the police, and you have a total between sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and the chief, twenty. Is that twenty part of that seventy-one?
Yes.
Oh, so then the ratio would be like a two to one, because are these all considered leadership positions or not?
Well, let's go through it. There's a chief, there's, um,
Three captains.
Three captains, six lieutenants, and up to thirteen sergeants, up to.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's, is it, so that's, and they're all, they're all considered leadership?
Well, look, a super, sergeant is a first line supervision, so to speak, and then you have lieutenants and captains, and then we have a deputy chief's position on the books that I haven't failed, filled, and we also have the chief. So if it's twenty spots there, you know, it's, you know, I'm not a mathematician, but it's close to three to one, I would think, two to one.
Okay, great. My next question is
Two and a half?
Pardon?
Maybe two and a half.
Okay, two point five. My next question is for Mayor Scarpelli. A year ago at the joint meeting, you were asked by a citizen, what was our utilization of water in town, because you had mentioned that we were, if we exceeded a threshold of utilization, that we were penalized for it, and at that time, it was a little over a year ago, it was February of two thousand eighteen, you said we were already at that limit. So I'm not sure I understand how our revenues have fallen, considering that our, and
We're trying to understand some of that too, Mr. Rossi, but let me, let me say that our, when we look at our three million gallons a day, that is our allocation from the North Jersey Water District, that three million dollars, that three million gallons is based on your worst day. So if you have a month where you're using a lot of water from North Jersey, and it's over the amount or up to the amount, that's what they look at. So although your consumption may be down on a daily basis, what they look at is your worst month, and that's what they consider your allocation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. My next question is regarding, it's, it seems as though Commissioner Evans is very concerned about managing this budget. Will you, will you consider freezing salaries and cease raising the upper limit of salary ranges for town employees, even if it's for three, four years, in light of the challenges that we're facing for the tax that we're facing for the taxpayers of Nutley? And will you use natural attrition, retirement, or transfer of town employees to mitigate budget challenges?
Ms. Rossi, let's just say that the budget's, it's in process, so don't take what you got at the workshop as what's going to happen in the end. So I think we're all going to work on our budgets and see where we can cut, and I think we're all committed to that.
Great. If I may just offer a solution, I spoke with a councilman from another town in Essex County, and he, their town shares services with neighboring towns, and he provided me a list of their shared services. Police dispatch, municipal clerk, building code enforcement, tax assessor, drinking water they buy from another town, animal service they buy from another, they sell subscriptions to the town pool to surrounding towns, they buy subscriptions to another town's library, they let other towns use their athletic fields, and as a result of sharing, their costs are much less and services are much better. So this was coming from a councilman in North Caldwell. I'm just asking for you to consider that, looking into that to also aid in the budgetary challenges.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue. First of all, I just want to make an announcement. Ms. Rossi suggested people be aware of this at the last meeting. It's an Oprah 101, How to Use the Open Public Records Act to Hold Your Government Accountable, and that will be held next Tuesday, March 12th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Nutley Public Library. I believe it will be recorded and broadcast, or I don't think it's being broadcast live, right? It's being recorded? Okay. And broadcast on the public access channel, so thank you. Just in terms of the budget, I wanted to just mention that Commissioner Evans, a few months ago, you mentioned in a conversation after a board of commissioners meeting that there would be a town hall on the budget. So I know that the process, or at least as I understand it was, tonight was the workshop, the budget will be submitted at the March 19th Board of Commissioners meeting, and then there will be a public hearing in April. Will there also be a town hall meeting? Or is that what you were suggesting, that the public meeting is the same as a town hall? Just checking.
So I have to, I'm not on, so I have to evaluate, but I am very open to a town hall discussion about the budget, so to build understanding around what the cost structure is and why it is what it is. If we can accomplish that in a public hearing session, I'm fine. If not, we'll host a town hall. As, consistent with prior years, we will introduce the budget, and March will hold a public hearing on it, but we won't adopt until we have a final word on our aid. So I was looking at that window of time, between the public hearing and before we adopt, to allow for a lot of good discussion about it.
That would be great. Thank you. In relation to the budget and taxes, the resolution tonight regarding the tax appeal settlement, does this close out all remaining tax appeals on the former Roche property, or is there still a tax appeal from Roche?
No, at the present time, this would close out the tax appeals.
Okay, so I think there was a reserve in the budget? Was there a reserve?
Yes.
And what happens to that reserve?
We will look at what we need to, in terms of our other risks in town. We weren't fully accrued for the liability, so a portion of it is just, we don't have to provide for it. But we're also facing a revaluation of the town, and generally, there's an uptick in appeals and challenges, so, you know, we're looking at the reserve in relation to the upcoming revaluation of the town as well.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, in the resolution, there's, there's a freeze, there's a freeze act, which I haven't read, but it doesn't mean the taxes won't change, they'll still be subject to the tax revaluation, because it says the township cannot agree to freeze the tax rate. Is that correct?
Yeah, we cannot, we cannot agree to freeze the tax rate. What we've frozen is the assessed value that's currently at, on those properties for two years.
Right, okay, so the assessed value will be frozen for two years, so even with an upcoming reassessment, it won't be subject to a change?
It will be, because the reassessment will be outside the two-year period.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. I do want to say thank you to Mayor Scarpelli for filing with the state our, the town's opposition to closing Highfield Lane at the railroad crossing. I mean, this is crazy that somebody can petition, the railroad, which is inactive, can petition for closure. So how do we, sort of, how do we guarantee that the state will, you know, come out, look at the situation? I mean, what's the process to guarantee that the state gives us a favorable response?
They've already been out and assessed it.
Okay.
We're working our end to make sure that they don't close it.
I understand, thank you. Another thing, and I know Ms. Rossi just, just sort of asked about it, but the water situation, so it sounds like during the budget workshop discussion, over four years, our water utility revenue is down about a million dollars? Did I hear that correctly? Okay, so that's roughly a quarter of a million dollars a year. And you're looking into it, so I'm not a big fan of hiring consultants, but is there a service or a company we can hire to come in and figure out what, what could possibly be happening?
We may get to that point, but right now, we're looking internally to see what the issue is.
Okay, and on the-
Could be, could be a multitude of, of things.
Okay, thank you. On the flip side, our sewerage keeps going up. I'm not sure if the hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar increase projected in the proposed budget is based on volume or based on rate increases or both, but I think there's been an increase the last couple of years?
Probably both.
Yeah, probably both, so, I don't know, it seems, again, odd that water use is down, but sewerage keeps rising, because the water goes somewhere, goes down the drain.
That's the conundrum.
Okay. Is there any way to audit that or to determine?
Sewerage?
Yeah.
It's metered.
Whole metered, yeah.
Okay.
Amy, to your point, you know, you're, you're actually raising one of the questions. So if sewage, which is a flow that incorporates water, right?
Yeah.
And that's rising, then why is water consumption going down? Right, water billing going down? So it opens up a lot of questions about what happens to water once it hits the town? Is it making it to the meter readers? And is that getting into the billing system? I'm satisfied that it's getting, whatever we're reading is getting into the billing system, and it's being billed. It's a question of, is it getting into the, is it getting to the readers, which is electronic, and to do that? So it's, it's hard to narrow it down and say, oh, it's this, and that's where the mayor said, you know, it's being fully analyzed at a lot of levels. But one of the roots of that is what you just raised, is if one is going, one flow is going up and the other one's going down, it does raise a question.
Okay, thank you. And the one thing I want to say, I understand that the current proposed budget is not what's being submitted, that the current 5.1% increase on, I'm going to call it the town, the municipal budget, it doesn't include county, and it doesn't include schools, right?
That's correct.
So I will reflect for the record that Commissioner Evans, you did indicate that a 5.1% increase is probably not acceptable to taxpayers. I think you indicated it's not acceptable to you, so I appreciate that. I guess the challenge for taxpayers is that we don't really hear anything about the school budget, and I still sometimes never understand why that doesn't get consolidated and ever discussed at the board of commissioners meetings. I understand they're separate entities, but they are part of the town services. So just want to say that if there is a town hall on the budget, I hope that it will be comprehensive and included discussion about county taxes, which we have no control over, and school taxes, which we seemingly have no control over as well.
Yes, so to your point is, the governing body here has direct control over the municipal portion of the budget. We do make inquiries, and we work very hard. So one of the ways we control the counting tax is to do a thorough job of, of understanding what quote-unquote qualifies as assessable value for the township. So for example, if a home is sold, but it's sold to, from a father to a son, for example, or a mother to a daughter or so on, it may not necessarily be an arm's-length transaction. You're able to exclude those sales and that value from that calculation. So it puts every municipality on, on an equal setting. Now, the county then apportions that, their bill, whatever they determine that bill to be, to the 21 municipalities based upon what their individual assessed value is. So if you take, if you add up all the assessed values, you get a total. Nutley's value is X, divided by that total gets a percent, that becomes our percent that we have to pay. And it's statutory on how that is determined, and that is approved by the, the tax rate is approved by the Essex County Tax Board. So they have to review that. So we, we do our best in managing the county by the formula, is what we contribute to the county, and that's, we make sure, and that's the assessor's responsibility, is to make sure that only qualifying value is included in that calculation. And we do a very thorough job of that every, every year. I do agree that when we, I will put together, and we do provide like a pie chart-
Yes.
For the taxpayers to see-
That was a new, yes.
Which is the contribution of each of the three components to the tax bill, so people can see what, what their taxes are going to and who, and where they're going.
Right. I guess my only question is, how does the county, I mean, it's like we, everything that you said makes sense, and we work to manage our percentage or our share, however, you know, the county budget, it's great, they'll spend a million dollars on a park in Nutley, but it just seems like the county has a lot of money to throw around, and it, it does seem like the county budget sometimes almost appears overinflated. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salento. Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners this evening? Seeing none.
Mayor, one more thing. I was unfortunate that I was unable to attend the Nutley Irish Parade. I understand it was another smashing hit, and you know, that's one of the traditions that really make Nutley what it is. And I know, Mr. McEnry, you're way back there. Thank you for your hard work all these years, so it was really, I was really happy to hear that. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Anybody who wishes to come in the back and watch us sign the documents, you're welcome to come in the back.